Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Joining me in council chambers are the city clerk, Mr. Fo, deputy clerk, Mr. Bantock, C E O, Ms. Thompson, and our director of corporate services, Ms. Kruger. Regrets for tonight's meeting come from Director of Community Services, David St. Louis. And if I could, I would ask you to join in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. And, Ms. Tofo, the meeting's yours.
Through your worship, item two is declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any declarations? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is adoption of the minutes. And as noted on the agenda, there are no minutes to be considered at this meeting. The December 12 regular council minutes will be listed on the January 9, 2023 regular council agenda for consideration. So moving to item four, adoption of the addenda, just prior to today's meeting, an addenda was circulated to add an item under section five, report of the committee of the whole and camera session and a bylaw. And there is a motion that the addenda to the regular agenda of council and standing committees dated December 19th be added to the agenda as printed.
Thank you, mover for such. Thank you, Council Ruback, second by Council McCabe. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. And just a reminder, as we go, and that's unanimous, go through tonight, make sure your hand appears on the screen in total. Okay? Thank you. And that's.
Through your worship, item five is report of the committee of the whole and camera session. Item 5.1, just prior to this evening's meeting, an in-camera session was held to consider the following items. Item 4.1, contract negotiations update I B E W local 636 parallel transit. And that was considered under the labor relations or an employee in globe negotiations exemption. Item 5.1, code of conduct responsibilities and obligations. And that was considered under the advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. And item 5.2, appointment to the corporate leadership team. And that was considered under the personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. And at the in-camera session with respect to item 4.1, direction was given to the clerk to list a resolution and bylaw on this evening's agenda as part of the addenda. Item 5.1, direction was given to our city solicitor and our chief administrative officer. And item 5.2, direction was given to receive the update. Moving to your addenda. Item 5.2, at the December 19 session, another minute is blacked as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered. And again, that was item 4.1, contract negotiations update for I B E W local 636 for parallel transit. And there is a staff recommendation that the memorandum of settlement with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Parallel Transit Division Local 636 effective January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2025 be ratified. And that the mayor, clerk, chief administrative officer, and director of human resources or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the memorandum of settlement and the collective agreement where applicable.
Thank you, mover for that item. Thank you, Council Ruback, a second dirt counselor, McCabe. Discussion. Seeing none, I will call the question, all in favor? Posed if any, and that's unanimous. And once again, thank you to Ms. Kirkos and her team for coming to that resolution. Well done. Thank you very much. And that item will come forward later in the meeting with regards to reading of a bylaw. Thank you.
Through your worship, returning to your agenda, item six is hearings of deputations and presentations. And item 6.1 is a presentation by Mayor Ritzma.
Thank you. So it is my pleasure to share a few words and of appreciation and thanks to our Stratford Public Library C E O Julia Merritt. As she is resigning from her role or leaving the role and leaving the beautiful city of Stratford and moving to beautiful area of Annapolis Valley on the East Coast to begin a career as the library C E O there. So Ms. Merritt did her undergrad at University of Guelph and in English and anthropology and her masters of library and information science from Western University. Ms. Merritt has been working in the library, in the libraries for nearly 20 years. Starting as a page, she's worked in settings from small rural towns to the GTA. She began her work as C E O with us in 2013. She is currently the chair of the Federation of Ontario Public Libraries Board. While the C E O in in the Stratford Public Library, Ms. Merritt accomplished so much. And I want to share a few of those with you. She oversaw the rollout of two strategic plans. Reorganized the library staff and library space for maximum maximum efficiency in a very small footprint. She oversaw the fundraising and restoration of the library auditorium and the creation of the maker space. She worked with the garden Stratford to transform the front gardens into a more inviting and accessible space. She enabled the library to forego fines, find, find free on all core collections, making the library more accessible to all. She did many of these items during the pandemic. The library is certainly did certainly flex and change its ways of serving the public during the COVID pandemic under Ms. Merritt's leadership. On a personal note, I've gotten to know Julia as an author. Her novel Horsemen, and that would be a great Christmas gift, is a wonderful, is a wonderful novel. I found out that we shared through the novel, we shared a commonality of time spent in the Ottawa Valley and her love for horses. On another personal note, and it's a, and it's a reflection of both Julia's and her staff's work at the library. I know you might know that I have grandchildren in Kingston. And when I pick up Francis Rose and what six years old, I'd say to Francis on the way from Kingston to to Stratford. We need to do a stop here and take a little break. And she'd say to me, no, Opah, I want to get to Stratford before the library closes. And then that's a true reflection of that significance to a, through a child's eyes. So Julia, on behalf of your staff, city of Stratford staff, council, and all the residents of Stratford, and especially the children. I wish to extend a huge thank you to you for sharing your special talents. A true leader leaves their, their work, their place of work, their post better than what they found it when they arrived. Thank you for doing that at the Stratford Public Library. Best wishes in Nova Scotia, and I look forward to your next book. Julie, do you want to say a few words? I see you're there. It's nice to see your face.
Thank you very much, Mayor Ritzma. Just to say thank you for the support that the city has shown the library over the last decade since I began working there. It's been wonderful to see the amount of things that we can do together. And the ways that the library has been able to positively improve the quality of life of the city. So I'm really, it's been a privilege to be able to do that for you, to do that work. And and I hope it will continue for many years in the future. And I look forward to seeing what the wonderful staff at the library do over the next decade. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it back to the clerk. Go ahead.
Through your worship, item seven is orders of the day, and item 7.1 is a resolution regarding Olmers membership for non full-time employees. And there is a staff recommendation that the Ontario Municipal Employees Retirement System, being Olmers membership for non full-time employees, report dated November 14, 2022, be received for information.
Move by. Thank you, Counselor Seven, and second by Counselor Hunter. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Posed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item 7.2 is a resolution regarding the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority Risk Management Services Progress Report. And there is a staff recommendation that the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority Risk Management Services Progress Report for 2022 be received for information.
Mover for that item. Thank you, Council Ruback, second by Counselor Beatty. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I will call the question, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item 7.3 is a resolution regarding information on the opt-in status for the Canada-wide early learning and childcare agreement. And there is a staff recommendation that the report titled Information on the Opt-in Status for the Canada-wide Early Learning and Childcare Agreement be received for information.
Thank you. Mover for that item. Thank you, Counselor Henderson, second by Counselor Briscoe. Any questions or comments? Counselor Henderson, go ahead.
I just had a little question. I see only eight of the 26 daycares are applying for this. I'm trying to remember, is there a time in the future that if the other ones want to apply for this, they still can? I just want to double check.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. I'll turn it over to our director of social services, Ms. McRae. Go ahead.
Thank you through your worship, Counselor Henderson. We had eight, eight, but they run 26 of the daycares. So it is actually 100% of our have opted in on this.
Oh, thank you for that clarification. I misunderstood that. That's wonderful news.
It is. It is wonderful news. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you very much. And please extend our thanks to the staff. I know Mr. Barkhouse and Cory Gunn were involved. So thank you very much. So I believe that item's been moved in second. And I'm looking to the clerk. Yes, it has. All in favor? And opposed if any? And that's Carrie. Thank you.
Item 7.4 is a resolution regarding the pre-budget 2023 pruning removal and disposal of designated trees and stumps. And there is a staff recommendation that the tender T dash 2022 dash 44 for the removal of designated trees and stumps in 2023 be awarded to Tree Tech, Tree and Property Maintenance Specialist, Inc. at a total cost of $53,550, including H S T. And that the tender for the regular and emergency pruning services in 2023 be awarded to Lang Bros. Tabstock Limited at a total cost of up to $225,100, including H S T.
Thank you. Counselor Beatty will move that, and Counselor Burbak will second. Discussion. Any questions on that item? Seeing none, I will pose the question, all in favor? Posed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item 7.5 is a resolution regarding E V charging station contractor. And there is a staff recommendation that Brain Electric be retained as a bona fide sole source contractor in accordance with the city's purchasing policy P dot 5 dot 1 to provide labor, materials, and equipment necessary for the installation of electric vehicle charging stations through the city's E V charging station expansion project.
Thank you. Mover for that item. Thank you, Counselor Niger, second by Counselor Burbak. Thank you. Questions or comments? Thank you, Counselor Hunter. Go ahead. And Counselor Briscoe.
Thank you, your worship. I noticed I went back to the May of 2021 memorandum on this when it was first brought to the city. And I noticed like there's quite a jump in the price already. And I would, I would prefer this go to tender personally. And I know there was, there was some concern that potentially prices would go up even more. I wonder if there's any other consequence, and perhaps I don't know if Ms. Thompson could answer this, whether there's anything else that any other negative consequence of sending this out to tender.
I'm going to look to Mr. Bantock first, if Deputy Clark, if you could address, and then perhaps to Ms. Thompson. Thank you. Go ahead.
Through your worship, so the main under consideration for going out to tender for this project could include risk of receiving eligible funding. So we do have deadlines that we're working towards for this fiscal year, which will run through to the end of March. So we're just trying to be cautious of meeting those deadlines and making sure we're going to receive all of the possible eligible funding we can. And by securing this contractor, now we can start to obtain materials for the phase one installs in the spring.
Follow up, Counselor Hunter?
Yes, thank you, your worship. So it's, it's a concern about timelines, but with the application having been done already, is this not? Should this not flow through fairly quickly? If we do tender it or is, and forgive me if I've, if I'm mistaken on timelines under tender. But I would think we could get something fairly quickly. No?
I'll go back to Mr. Bantock. Go ahead, please.
Through your worship. So I can't speak to the exact timelines, just depending on how quickly we're able to put something together and then receive responses in an appropriate amount of time. The other thing I would note as well is the familiarity of the, of the project to the current contractor. Just given their, their current experience and assisting staff with putting together the funding application. I'd also note staff did attempt to reach out to a second contractor at the same time when engaging the first contractor. But they were unresponsive, so we were left with the contractor that we're with now, both of which, though, were offered as recommendations by the infrastructure development services staff.
Thank you. I, Counselor Briscoe, and then Counselor McCabe. Thank you.
Thank you through your worship. I think I share the same concerns as Counselor Hunter. I just worried about the appearance of kind of a benefit to the one individual. It's simply they answered the phone. So now they have this quite large contract and benefit coming their way. And I understand the situation of business and the timelines, but I do, I am hesitant. It has there been any analysis on if there is any sort of conflict of interest? Or perhaps one company receiving a benefit without opening it to tender as well? When we speak about the expertise, if it were to open to tender, would there be a way to introduce into the kind of R F P a way to gauge expertise in the same way that we've been able to gauge our current, the proposed contractor?
Thank you, Deputy Clark.
So through your worship, we would certainly include specifications in the tender. The work has been completed to analyze site servicing. So we do have quite specific work that's been identified for the proposed locations. The, the information related to the proposed contractor is permitted through exception under the policy. So that's just the, the recommendation that's been brought forward in accordance with, with the city's procurement policy.
Counselor McCabe?
I'm just wondering what, what would typically be a turnaround time for something to be put to tender and then for us to get a response?
I might turn to our Ms. Kruger, Director of Corporate Services. Go ahead.
Thank you through, through you, Mr. Mayor. The typical turnaround for an R F P, like if it's fairly straightforward in terms of creating the scope would probably be anywhere from four to eight weeks.
Any other comments? Counselor Beatty and then Counselor Burbak. Go ahead.
Well, I'm just going to emphasize again what the deputy clerk mentioned earlier, and that there is a timeline on this. And so what we're doing, especially right now, just for Christmas, we're asking for efforts to be put forward to put a tender out. And then we're going to be asking for companies to pick up the applications to make it tender. And I always say be careful what you wish for, because just because you put it out for tender doesn't mean you're going to get a better deal. So we do have something here from a local reputable company and who has expertise in this. So although I appreciate the concerns of wanting to ensure that we're getting the best for the city. I would be, has, I would hazard a guess that we probably are sitting on something very good this moment in time.
Thank you, Counselor Beatty. Counselor Burbak. Go ahead.
Thank you through the mayor. I'd like to ask the Director of Corporate Services a question too about, about timelines and, and the funding. So is there a hard deadline for when we need to be using that funding? Or like, would, is it six or eight weeks? I'm just curious if, how this is going to line up if we attempt to do an R F P.
Thank you, Counselor Burbak.
Through the chair, I think I would defer to, to the deputy clerk for the timelines. I think he's got that answer right at his fingertips.
Thank you.
Deputy Clark?
Through your worship. So as I, as I mentioned, we are working in the current fiscal year with the federal government ending March 31, 2023. So we do have kind of a window of funding in this first fiscal year to kind of obtain as, as much as we can that's listed as an eligible expenditure. So just by going through this process again, we're taking as much opportunity as we can to get as much of that funding as we can with eligible expenditures.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Niger and Counselor Seven and Hunter?
Through your worship, what is a percentage of the grant that we'll be receiving? Is it like a 50% or is it a, do you recall?
I'm just going back to Deputy Clark. I think he's doing a little bit of research there. Just give us a moment here.
Through your worship, my apologies. So we're looking at 75% of overall funding in this first window. And then the following fiscal year will be the remaining 25%.
So that's a substantial amount of money that we, there's a possibility we may miss if we did go up to tender?
Through your worship, it is a possibility. Again, it just depends on timelines and how much in terms of eligible expenditures we're able to obtain. Again, overall, going through, making this recommendation just kind of gives us further opportunity to, to do so.
Counselor Seven, and then Counselor Hunter.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions now based on, if I could just follow up first with Mr. Bantock about the funding. Is that, is that set that it would be 75 and then 25%? Or is that something that could potentially change based on the application for the grant if things were to change?
Mr. Bantock?
Through your worship. So at this time, it is set in an executed contribution agreement between the city and Natural Resources, Canada.
Okay, and follow up, Counselor Seven.
Thank you. And I, my, my other question was, do we have, I don't know if this would be to Mr. Bantock or Ms. Kruger. Just this kind of work in the past, do we have any way to, like, any comparables in the, in the cities? Recent history of contracts or work like this that would be of assistance to kind of gauge the, the cost of this one?
Mr. Bantock, anything on your end?
I don't have anything familiar that I'm aware of. The only thing I would note is that the costs that we've been provided by the contractor have been reviewed internally. And we're just noted as being fair and appropriate based on that review. I don't have anything in terms of other comparables to provide. I'm not sure if perhaps the Director of Corporate Services has anything to add.
Ms. Kruger?
No, I don't have anything further to add.
Thank you.
Sorry, let me rephrase that. We, we only have the comparators internally for other work that's done by the contractor. So and other, other contractors of that nature. So we're just gauging the, the appropriateness and the fairness of the pricing based on our experience with other electrical work. So it's not, it's not necessarily comparable to this project.
Thank you. Counselor Hunter and then Counselor Henderson.
Thank you, your worship. Two questions, if I can, from Mr. Bantock. My, my recollection, and perhaps I read that wrong, but the city's portion of this would be ballpark 317,000. And the government con, or the federal government contribution, I believe, was 160,000. Is that correct?
Mr. Bantock?
Through your worship, I know the, the government portion is correct. They don't have the numbers in front of me for the city, but I believe that is around the number.
Okay, thank you. And my, my second question was that in May of 21, this was estimated to be a total cost of 110,000. And now we're up for 70 ballpark. And is there any indication of why that's risen so drastically?
Mr. Bantock?
So through your worship, so I believe the 110 that is being referenced from that report of in 2021 was only costs related to the station infrastructure. So we didn't, staff didn't have estimates at that time related to the extent of some of the work that would be required to prepare different sites to install the stations. So that 110 is mostly, if not all, the actual infrastructure itself, or sort of the actual stations themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hunter, Counselor Henderson, and Counselor Briscoe.
Through your mayor, the latest ones that I remember we did were through in Market Square, but they're slow charging ones. And I think part of the reason, also the price changes, I think energy environment recommended that we get some fast charging ones too, so that they're more expensive and costly to put in. I have concerns too about not putting it our, for an R F P. But I heard staff say they already had called two, and the one didn't return their call. So because of this grant, I'm concerned that many municipalities in Ontario are getting this grant. And they're all going to be trying to get a contractor to come in. And if this one's available for us and the price seemed right, we might be smarter to grab him in case we put it out for R F P and he signs on with other municipalities. I'm not sure how many qualified businesses are like this in Ontario, but it's just another point to worry about.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson, Counselor Briscoe, and then Counselor Seven.
Thank you through your worship. I think, because my concern's not so much the price, I certainly take the staff recommendation that's a fair price. I think mine's the process and just maintaining the kind of transparency of the process, but also acknowledging the expedited timeline. Are there other examples where we've had to kind of go this route because of an expedited timeline? And I know government funding timelines are very tight. So is there a general kind of practice of how we expedite while maintaining kind of that transparency piece?
I'll look to the director for this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There, there's a lot of examples where the process includes making exceptions in our purchasing policy for various reasons. So oftentimes, when, when there's funding involved and from a different level of government, there, the timelines don't really marry up with the way that our timelines work for our fiscal year. So there's, we're often facing pressures where we're trying to complete or proceed with something in, in the fall or the winter of a given year. And the funding requirement is that we spend that money by the spring of the following year. So there's like, there's, there are that. I think that's why, or I know that that's why that those provisions exist in our procurement policy to allow that flexibility to, to make those exceptions when it's appropriate.
Thank you. I have Counselor Seven and then Counselor Beatty and Burbak. Go ahead.
Thank you. I, my question, I think, is to Mr. Bantock. Is the funding requirement that, I assume it's not that this has to be completed by the end of the fiscal year? Or what is the, what's the requirement that needs to be met to, to obtain the funding in this case?
Bantock?
Through your worship. So we have reporting deadlines as a part of the contribution agreement in terms of providing updates to enter can. Essentially, we're providing a financial report to them by a certain date, which it would include having invoiced various eligible expenses up until the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you.
Counselor Beatty and then Counselor Burbak.
I'm sorry, worship. I'm going to forego my, my question's irrelevant at this point in time. Has this motion been moved in second?
Yes, it has.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. I have just one comment and one question, just also a note about construction inflation. I think it's upwards of 20%. So the further we push this down the line, the more potential there is for the prices to increase. And I had a question for Mr. Bantock just about the project. And I had a question for Mr. Bantock just about the project in general. I remember that Counselor Ingram had asked about the levels of charger. Are these level three chargers? Or are some of them going to be level three chargers?
Through your worship, so one of the stations is going to be a level three charging station. As I believe was mentioned earlier, these stations are quite a bit more costly. So it was more difficult to include numbers beyond this, this one station. And ongoing operating costs as well are quite expensive. So but one of them is a level three. And then there'll be twenty two charging ports additional to that that will be level two.
Anything further? So this item has been moved and seconded? If there's nothing further, I'm, Counselor Briscoe, I see your hand. I'm sorry.
No problem. Through your worship, just for our Director of Corporate Services, if it was to go to an RFP, how would that disrupt your current work plan and any other tight timelines we're working on in other projects that could become affected?
Curie, Mr. Mayor, how would it disrupt? Is that was the question? Thank you. It's something that we can respond to fairly quickly with when it comes to an RFP, that the issue is a little bit out of our control with the timing here because we're coming into a season of, I'll say, reduced workflow from not just like at the city, but from all kinds of suppliers and whatnot. So the, you know, two to, two to eight week timeline kind of gets extended by another four to six weeks, depending on the availability of city staff, of, of contractor staff and the ability for even, even competitors of the proposed candidate to respond to something like this at this exact time. So there's like, there's a couple of timeline pressures that are happening right now, not just, not just the grant funding. So.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Hunter, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Is, I don't know if this is best for Mr. Bantock, but if an RFP went out and had a response required by the last working day of January, would, would that be too tight a squeeze, do you think, if we put that out to contractors?
Mr. Bantock?
Through your worship, again, I think based on the comments from the Director of Corporate Services, I think it all depends on you know, how, how quickly responses could be anticipated and whether or not an appropriate amount of responses were able to be received. I will defer the rest to the director.
Go ahead, Ms. Kruger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, just to chime in a little bit on this one. So typically we would leave an RFP open for at least a three week period to allow an appropriate amount of time for bidders to put a package together. So factoring that in, that really only leaves between now and January the third for staff to get the RFP issued. Right? So that's kind of the, that, that, that's sort of the timeline that we're facing, I'll say, from, from city's perspective. But the other piece of it is that, you know, we, we don't expect or we don't, we're not expecting that we would get a significant response based on the scope that we've already identified. I think also the, the deputy clerk has, has alluded to this, but the, the grant requirements are such that we have to have received invoices for product that we've purchased by the March thirty first deadline. So depending on what we could run into with an alternative supplier with supply chain issues or other ordering delays, I would say potentially could impact that, those timelines as well. So I don't know if that answered your question fully, Counselor Hunter, but.
Thank you, Director. Anything further? Counselor Bean, go ahead. Thank you.
Um, in the wording, could it, does it clearly state that this is just for this specific contract with the twenty two or whatever you had just mentioned? That it's not like ongoing, like it could be the next time there's another contractor then could be put out?
I'm going to turn to Deputy Clerk, Mr. Bantock. Thank you, Counselor Bean.
So through your worship, in the wording of the recommendation, we did include the name of this expansion project. So the understanding would be that it's just for this project under this funding agreement with Enter Can that this sole source would be provided for.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, I am going to call the question. All in favor, please hold your hand so I can get a, a count here. Opposed, if any? And that's Carrie. Thank you very much.
Item seven point six is a resolution regarding the extension of the two thousand and twenty two business licenses. And there is a staff recommendation that the expiry date of business licenses issued in two thousand and twenty two be extended until March thirty first, two thousand and twenty three.
Move by? Thank you, Counselor Hunter, seconded by Counselor Henderson. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's Carrie. Thank you.
Item seven point seven is a resolution regarding the Q three operating budget variance report. And there is a staff recommendation that the Q three operating variance report as at September thirtieth be received for information.
A mover? Thank you, Counselor Briscoe, seconded by Counselor Niger. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item seven point eight is a resolution regarding the interim tax levy due dates by law for two thousand and twenty three. And there is a staff recommendation that the report titled interim tax levy due dates by law for two thousand and twenty three be received for information. And that council authorized a bylaw to establish the interim tax rate dates for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty three.
Thank you. Mover for that item? Thank you, Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counsel Burbak. Discussion. Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's Carrie. Thank you.
Item seven point nine is a resolution regarding Bill twenty three, the More Homes Built Faster Act. And there is a staff recommendation that council receive the report, Bill twenty three for More Homes Built Faster Act two thousand and twenty two dated December nineteenth for information.
Thank you. A mover for that item? Thank you, Counsel Burbak, seconded by Counsel Beatty. Discussion. Counselor Henderson, I see your hand, and Counsel Burbak, go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure if you wanted to add it here, but I think we need to have that, I, I know that you have wrote on behalf of, of the city council about Bill twenty three, but I think we need to send another letter. Because of the fact that we don't know all of the rules and regulations that are going to come out yet, but I have strong concerns about the fact that they're saying they're going to be building all these homes. And, and then some of them get to not have to pay development charges. But I haven't seen anywhere that says they have to be affordable and that they have to be, say, kept affordable for, say, twenty five years. And, you know, so, you know, it's one thing for the city to lose the development charges. But if we're at least guaranteed that the homes are going to be made affordable for twenty five years, it's a bit of a lesser bullet, but that's hard for us to lose those development charges because we have to maintain the new homes, you know, like the taxes that people pay in the new home certainly doesn't cover like the yearly keep up of all the sewer and sanitary systems and that. And plus I have a lot of concerns about the upper ten, some of the, the cutting of that, like it's very dangerous to be building, letting people build in wetlands and not having their, they're so thorough with their, when they look at anything, you know, I know, I, I know by the ones when we, we've tried to build near some wetlands and they've brought back their concerns and we've looked at that and, or stormwater management and all the things that are needed there. I think we need a strong, good worded resolution to go to the government to say how concerned we are and all the money that we're going to be losing or we're going to be having to pay. And, and we certainly don't want to be putting it on the taxpayers' back. We need help to build affordable homes, but not this type of help. And I'm not sure of the wording.
Yep. Thank you, Counsel Henderson. And, and so you know, and then I'll turn the, the floor over to our C A O. We have requested consultation with the minister and, and through the premier as well with regards to all those items that you've mentioned. And, and so that has happened and I'll turn it over to our C A O to talk about where we are with regards to that process. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, through your worship. So as noted, the, the letter has been sent to the province. Mayor Ritzma also was able to have some limited communications when he was down in Toronto earlier in the month with other mayors and municipal leaders. At this point, we have not heard a response back with respect to scheduling any more discussions, but we can continue to communicate to the province of our concerns. I will say that as noted in the excellent report from staff on Bill twenty three and the implementate, sorry, implications, we are still waiting for the regulations. We are still waiting for the definitions to come forward so that we can complete our, our analysis. We're hoping that once we get some more clarification, we are, we will be able to zero in more on the implications to the, the city of Stratford, just like other municipalities are also waiting for that clarification with respect to, to Bill twenty three.
Thank you. Counsel Burbak and Counsel McCabe.
Thank you, through the mayor. Just wanted to thank staff for this report. I thought it was very thorough and especially development charges and that those type of information, we're going to be able to move forward hopefully with a response to the province, but we do have to wait for them to define some of the things. There are a couple of things that we talked about during the last term, things that aren't necessarily on the plate of, of staff yet because there, there are ideas that are coming forward. One of them is to have green development standards. And so I'm just going to make a note that this bill, as it currently stands, would remove the city's ability to implement green development standards. And it would impact the creation of units that are more efficient and affordable. So that's, it's, that's a major impact of, of a future set of standards that we were going to implement, which will impact our ability to meet our climate carbon reduction deadlines. The other proposed limitations or revisions to inclusionary zoning, we don't have inclusionary zoning yet, but that was another item in our official plan update that I'd be really interested to see us looking at inclusionary zoning. And again, this bill will limit our ability to go forward in that area. So inclusionary zoning ma, means that we make sure that there's units that are being built that are affordable for low and middle income households as well. And the, the third thing I would note, it's going to be really important that the province actually defines affordable housing and attainable housing. Right now, they say that they're going to use attainable housing to be exempted from development charges. And that's problematic because almost every unit that's created is attainable to someone. So really restoring an affordable housing definition would also be a priority that I see. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Burbak. Counsel McCabe, go ahead.
I'm just curious, as regarding the statement, I think by the Minister of Housing that the government intended to make municipalities whole in relationship to this bill, whether we are going to know what those expectations look like prior to passing the budget for next year.
And I'll look to the C A O on that.
Yes, certainly we are, we are aware of the comments that were made by the, by the premier. Again, we are reviewing that. There were additional comments made about finding more efficiencies. And we are certainly, you know, always looking for efficiencies. And any clarification from the province that they can provide on that would certainly be, be helpful. We have gone through a service delivery review that started before the pandemic. We have identified a number of efficiencies through our service delivery review. And we are continuing to, to work through those, but we would welcome any further clarification from the province on efficiencies and making the municipalities whole in light of Bill twenty three.
And certainly I'll remind staff that I've had several conversations with M P P and Matthew Ray about challenges and the impacts that it will have on our municipality. Anything further? Counselor Niger, go ahead, please.
Now with these homes and possibly populations growing going forward, is the province willing or are they going to assist with schools and, you know, development of those nature of transit and all, all those other pieces that are required as we grow?
And that's a piece of discussion as we move forward because we haven't received that assurity with regards to covering the, the infrastructure costs, the, that will be lost, those dollars that would be lost through development charges. So those discussions are part of our dialogue. Once we do get a chance to dialogue with the minister and the M P P around that. You're absolutely right on that. Other comments or questions? Thank you, Counsel Briscoe. Go ahead.
Thank you. First, I kind of want to preface it if, and by asking the clerk through your worship, if it's appropriate for me to provide information from the minister that I've received in my other capacity, or if that's better left not to be shared.
I, in, in my opinion, I'll turn to the clerk that if you share that with the C A O, then that can come through that office, but I'll turn to the clerk to see if she wants to get further direction.
Through you, your worship, my recommendation would be to provide that information to the C A O and then perhaps they can review and then provide any additional information to council as needed at a later date.
Okay, thank you. And thank, thank you. And through your worship, going back to Counsel Burbak's point about the definitions, I think one thing moving forward for all council to keep in mind is to stand with the housing sector and, and housing advocates and adopting the C M H C thirty percent of income definition as affordable. It's something that all cities are going to need to stand strong on. And so something I encourage all counselors to be engaged with and happy to provide more research on, but that's the definition I would support moving forward.
Thank you, Counsel Briscoe. Anything further? Seeing none, we do have a motion to receive the staff recommendation or to, 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 yes, for the staff recommendation that council received the report, Bill twenty three, More Homes Built Faster Act two thousand and twenty two dated December the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty two for information. And that's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item seven ten is correspondence regarding a divisional court file. And as outlined on the agenda, a unanimous decision was rendered by the Ontario Superior Court of Justice Divisional Court dated November twenty fifth regarding one three five three eight three seven Ontario Inc. versus the corporation City of Stratford. The appellant had appealed the decision of the Ontario Land Tribunal dated October twenty first, two thousand and twenty one pursuant to the Appropriations Act. The Ontario Superior Court of Justice Divisional Court dismissed the appellant's appeal and awarded costs of twenty thousand dollars to the city. And this is provided for the information of council.
Thank you.
Moving to item seven eleven, it's a resolution regarding an electronic documents records management system proposal award. And there is a staff recommendation that the request for proposal RFP dash two thousand and twenty two dash thirty nine for an electronic document records management system and project manager be awarded to Image Advantage Solutions, Inc. at a total proposal price of forty seven thousand, five hundred and sixty three dollars and ninety six cents, including H S T. And that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign all necessary contract agreements and documents.
Move by? Thank you, Counsel Burbak, seconded by Counsel Hunter. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item seven twelve is a resolution regarding voting and consideration of a deputy mayor appointment. And there is a staff recommendation that the report titled voting in consideration of a deputy mayor appointment be received for information.
A mover for that item? Thank you, Counsel Beatty, seconded by Counsel Niger. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item 713 is a resolution regarding the deputy mayor appointment follow up. And there is a recommendation that direction be given on the appointment of a deputy mayor until November 14th, 2024.
Councillor Henderson, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate councillor Burbak for deputy mayor until November 2024.
Thank you. A seconded for that item. Thank you, councillor Briscoe. Discussion. Seeing none, I will call the question on the motion. All in favor? Opposed? And that's defeated? Another motion from from council? Councillor Beatty.
I'll make motion for councillor Niger to be deputy mayor.
Seconded for that item. Thank you, councillor Bean. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Please hold your hand so I can get a count, please. Opposed, if any? And that's carried.
Item eight is business, which previous notice has been given, and there's none scheduled. Item nine is reports to the standing committees, and there are no standing committee reports to be considered at this evening's meeting. Item 10 was notice intent, and there was none scheduled. So moving to reading of the bylaws, there are six bylaws listed for consideration as follows. Item 11.1 is the award of the tender for the removal of designated trees and stumps in 2023 and regular and emergency pruning services in 2023. Item 11.2 is the interim tax levy for 2023. Item 11.3 is acceptance of the proposal for the electronic document records management system and project manager. Item 11.4 is the connecting links program contribution agreement for the Ontario Street Resurfacing 2022 project. Item 11.4 is appointment of councillor Niger as the deputy mayor for a two-year term. And then turning to your addenda, item 11.7 is execution of memorandum of settlement and collective agreement with IBEW Local 636 for the parallel transit. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present.
A motion to take those collectively. Thank you, councillor Seven and councillor Hunter. Thank you very much. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that is unanimous. Then we're looking at first and second reading. Thank you, councillor Henderson, seconded by councillor Niger. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Third and final. Mover for that. Thank you, councillor Beatty and councillor McCabe. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous.
Item 12 is the consent agenda. And there's no consent agenda to be considered at this evening's meeting. It's moving to items 13, new business. Are there any new business items?
I'm going to turn to Ms. Thompson for a recognition piece here. Thank you.
Thank you, through you, your worship. It is my pleasure to recognize the work of the CMSM Consortium tonight, who were recently recognized with a local municipal champion award. So this is the Stratford Bruce Peninsula Employment Service Systems Manager. So Bruce Gray here in Stratford partnered as a consortium to successfully apply to be the Employment Service System Manager for the Stratford Bruce Peninsula catchment area. Through this application, leadership and staff from human services from each member municipality collaborated to develop an application that would see these service system manager focus on improving the integration of Ontario Works, ODSP, local employment service providers, and the needs of local employers. Working together across traditional silos, this consortium will support the creation of an integrated human services model that does not leave people behind. The Employment Service System Manager for the Stratford Bruce Peninsula took a truly local approach to service system management. And within the employment service transformation, the Bruce Gray here in Stratford Consortium is the only service system manager that formally brought together the four CMSMs into an integrated model to deliver employment services to the catchment area. So I would like to recognize Kim McElroy, our Director of Social Services, and her team and the other members of the and the other CSMS for for bringing this together and being so successful and in achieving this award. Congratulations.
Thank you. And I'll certainly echo that. It's always nice when our staff shines and when they're acknowledged for their work to serve our residents and beyond the city of Stratford as well. So congratulations. Back to the clerk.
Through you, your worship, item 14, adjournment to standing committees, and there are no standing committees scheduled. I will note the next regular council meeting will be held in the new year on January 9th, 2023, which is very exciting. The next item is item 15, confirmatory bylaw. This bylaw requires first and second reading and third and final reading.
Mover for first and second. Thank you, councillor Bean, seconded by councillor McCabe. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Third and final. Councillor Henderson and councillor Seven. Thank you. All in favor? And that's unanimous. And the last item of this, our last council meeting is the motion to adjourn. Thank you, councillor Hunter and councillor Beatty. Thank you very much. And we are adjourned.
First, we have to vote.
I'm sorry, all in favor. I'm sorry, they had their hands up. I'm sorry. All in favor. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Happy holidays.
Thank you. And we're adjourned. Thank you.